All right, good evening everyone. It is now six P M and welcome to the Harrison School District two school board meeting for June seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one. Members of the public who desire to address the board on any topic related to board work must sign the roster before six thirty P M. That public comment would be pushed and hailed to six thirty P M, though on our agenda it is stated for six fifteen. We're going to give you guys a little bit more time to get signed in tonight. Mrs. Q, if I could get a roll call please?
Regina English?
Here.
Janine Rarat is Allison. Linda Q, here.
Steve Seaver?
Here.
Corey Williams?
Here.
And student rep, board reps do not appear to be present, but also ask.
All right, moving on to, I agree, our pledge of allegiance and reading of our state, mission statement. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you read the mission statement since you're right there?
Oh, absolutely. Our mission is to graduate college and careers ready students with the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behaviors to personally succeed and contribute to the common good.
All right, thank you, Mr. Seaver. Moving on to item number three about the agenda, the board will function as a single unit. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
And if I could just get a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. Q, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we have a meeting. We're going to skip number four, as I previously stated, and move on to item number five, communicating with the board. While we're not, the superintendent shall assure that the board is fully and adequately informed about matters relating to board work and significant district concerns. We have virtually, uh, Mr. D. Weiser. How are you today, sir? Can you hear us?
Okay.
All right, it's good to see you, how have you been?
I've been good.
Hello, Dee, hi, this is Shelley Becker. So, thank you Board of Education, we're excited tonight and glad Dee could join us virtually, um, tonight's presentation. Um, and in a sense, it's a refresh from February a year ago, when Mr. Weiser came and crewed to present here at Harrison. So, um, Dee has a handful of slides. Dee, I'm going to be your person advancing the slides, so I'll keep up as you're talking. And, um, please, any question? Dee Weiser, uh, works for Butler Snow and he is the state expert on all things Tabor and Yaliker. So, really, um, a great opportunity and time to ask any sort of questions. He's an excellent resource, um, and just here to help us understand what oftentimes can be a complex, um, conversation. Okay, Dee, go ahead, take it away.
Shelley, do you have slides here? Can you share the screen?
You can share a screen.
Do you want to share a screen?
Okay.
Yes.
Do that. Go ahead.
Yes.
You can go ahead and share your screen, Mr. Weiser.
Yeah, that'd be great, Dee.
I'll see if I can do it. Uh, it's not quite ready. Sorry, well, this call doesn't begin today. Uh, if somebody here just run, I'll just talk and say, uh, how's the?
We must definitely do that, Mr. D.
Yeah, no worries, Dee, I got you. Go ahead, the show is yours.
Okay, so, uh, good to be with you all again. Um, let's go to slide two. Um, the table requires elections on three different categories of things. Basically, any tax increase, uh, most debt, uh, and mostly importantly for this conversation, keeping revenues which exceed Tabor limits. And there are two such Tabor limits. The first is a limit on total district revenue. And, uh, the way that works under Tabor is the amount of revenue collected last year, adjusted for the percentage increase in, um, inflation and student population. Now, there are also exceptions from those revenues, I'm going to slide four now. Um, uh, and a lot of these won't apply to the, to the district. Uh, but for example, gifts that the district receives or federal funds that the district receives are excluded. So, the pension contributions, property sales, now on slide five, um, uh, property sales and lottery receipts. And although, guess the district doesn't really get lottery receipts directly probably. Uh, so there's a number of things that are excluded, but most notably not excluded are state, uh, revenues. So, monies that you receive from the School Finance Act from the state of Colorado are not excluded from Tabor's revenue. So, in effect, they do counter for Tabor purposes twice, once at the state level, and then again at your level. Um, there's a, going, going down to slide six, there is a second Tabor revenue limit that applies just to your property tax revenue. And it is again the same formula, is the revenue collected from property taxes last year, adjusted for the percentage increase in inflation and student population growth. Um, there is what we've talked about since Tabor passed, the potential for a ratchet down, because the way that formula works, if revenues decline due to a recession, the government has trouble getting back to pre-recession levels without voter approval. Uh, and I'm going to slide eight now, I'm going to do a little elemental lawyer math. So, for example, uh, if in twenty nineteen, the district's total revenues were a hundred dollars, and inflation and student population growth is five percent, then the revenue limit in twenty twenty is a hundred and five dollars. If the district actually collects a hundred and six dollars in twenty twenty, then that one dollar excess must be refunded unless the voters approve otherwise. Now, if inflation and student population growth is again five percent, the cap for twenty twenty-one would be a hundred and ten dollars and twenty-five cents. You can see the math there on slide eight. Going to slide nine, if, if the district however only really collects a hundred dollars, and if inflation and student population growth is three percent, the cap for twenty twenty-two is a hundred and three dollars rather than a hundred, a hundred and ten dollars and twenty-five cents on the preceding slide. So, that's the potential ratchet effect, the way Tabor's revenue limits work. So, a debruising election is a popular term, uh, this is on slide ten. It's a popular term used to describe an election where the voters are asked to permit the district to keep revenues in excess of one or both of the Tabor revenue limits. As it turns out, a hundred and seventy-six of Colorado's a hundred and seventy-eight school districts are now totally debruised. You are the one district that is not debruised as to either your total revenues or your school finance, uh, property tax, uh, revenues. Um, the Stevo Supreme Court is your debruised as to everything except for its property tax, uh, revenues. So, you two are the two districts that are now sort of affected by this. Going to the slide eleven, the School Finance Act now says that the mill levy that a district has to impose raises its share of total program funding is the lesser of these four things. And most importantly for you, it's the highlighted, uh, the current areas are highlighted in yellow, and that is the maximum amount that you collect under Tabor's revenue limits. But it's lesser of total program funding, um, when you can collect under Tabor's revenue limits, the number of mills that you collected prior year, or twenty-seven mills. Going to slide twelve, the history of Harrison School Finance Law, I've obviously put it all on here. You can see in nineteen ninety-three, Harrison School Finance Law was forty mills, but this year it's down to fifteen point seven two mills. Uh, so, um, even if you debruised at this year's election, fifteen point seven two mills would be your cap without further voter approval for the school finance purposes. Um, that leads to them, um, side fifteen, excuse me, side thirteen. Um, I, I wonder if there's not going to be an effort in a future legislative session to require all school districts to get to twenty-seven mills. Certainly, that idea was floated around in the last couple of legislative sessions, it did not come up this year, to my knowledge. Uh, but again, so if, if your voters in twenty twenty-one were to debruise your property tax revenues, then you would be at fifteen point seven two mills. But you can't get back to twenty-seven mills without the district's voter approval. Uh, and what was in some prior iterations of the Uniform Mill Levy Bill basically created a penalty. And that penalty was, if you didn't get to twenty-seven mills by date certain, the state was going to reduce its share of total program funding by the amount of that, uh, difference. Uh, so, it's a reason to be concerned about and think about this. Um, you may have heard that the Supreme Court this year decided that school districts could raise their mill levy back up to what it was in the year in which they debruised. For some school districts, that in fact will be twenty-seven mills. But there will be some districts that the year they debruised their mill levy was less than twenty-seven mills, so they won't get there unless they too have voter approval to get to the twenty-seven mill order. So, I guess I should emphasize, there is no current proposal, which I'm aware, to get to the twenty-seven mill uniform levy. But, um, I, I wonder if for equitable reasons, the legislature won't try and force that at some future time. Going to slide fourteen, is, is Glenn there tonight, Shelley?
No, and I'm not sure where he is. He hasn't.
Okay. Okay, well, so, last year, um, District eleven went ahead and had a debruising election. And so I've put up here for you on slide fourteen, the form of that question that District eleven voters approved. Uh, and you can see that it's, it's relatively straightforward, at least as Tabor questions go, that it asks for the authority to collect, retain, uh, and retain all revenues from all sources, including grant monies that will cover, uh, um, some other state county grants. But it also made specific references to the amounts that are received by the district from the state of Colorado for school, uh, finance purposes. Um, now, if the Uniform Mill Levy legislation ever comes about, that question gets a lot more complicated. And I just, on slide fifteen, showed that to you, uh, because you, the way the prior iterations of that legislation were, it would require one mill per year, at least one mill per year increase. And so you can see that there's this table in this question asking for that afforded. Well, let's, let's go back to slide fourteen, the, the debruising question, because that's really what's before you to consider. Uh, and, um, I, I just, we emphasize that some people would describe this question as a tax increase. I don't think it's that, the mill levy is not going to change, it's not going to go up as a result of this increase. Another Tabor can't go up without voter approval. But the effect of these questions is that voters will not get a decrease. Basically, the Tabor revenue limit drives down the mill limit pursuant to the revenue formula. So, your taxpayers would see, uh, uh, they would not see the continued decline of that mill levy that we saw on the earlier slide. So, it might be this debate about, is it a tax increase or is it a? Um, I mean, I guess it's technically not an increase in the mill levy, uh, but it is the fact that taxpayers would be asked to maybe pay more than they would have if the debruising question didn't pass. But I think again, sort of like the Uniform Mill Levy conversation, because Harrison and Steamboat are the only remaining districts that have not debruised, uh, I, I can imagine there may be continuing pressure, um, at the State House to try and get both of those districts, both U and Steamboat, to do that. I would note that in addition to District eleven last year, Cherry Creek also got debruised, because it was, until last year, Cherry Creek, D eleven, Harrison, and Steamboat that had not debruised. And last year, both Cherry Creek and, and, uh, District eleven did. So with that, Shelley, I'll stop and let's see if there are any questions from, from the board here staff.
And we have written down, we can see.
No questions for you, uh, Mr. Weiser, uh, just comments. Uh, we, we were just speaking about this in the back, and we were talking about the possibilities of, of our mills being raised, and, and it not being by our own hand, and we were talking about the detriment that it could cause, uh, for, uh, the effects of our citizens here in this district. Uh, and we are definitely getting pressured from some of the other districts in the state saying, you guys need to come on. Um, I appreciate all, all of your info, um, and it's good to see you doing well. Um, I have nothing else to add. Um, do you have anything, Steve, I know you?
I, I, I don't. Uh, Mr. Weiser, I sat through the, the third presentation, the third visit, uh, from you, and we've had discussion for many years about this. Probably, uh, would have put it on the ballot a couple of years ago, but we had a, a bond issue that we did not want to, uh, muddy the waters with. So now it's back before us to make a decision again. Uh, maybe this evening, so, but good to see you again and appreciate the, the, all the effort that you've put in. The third, well, it's not really a trick this time, but, uh, the third time.
Well, thanks, true. And I, I apologize that you've listened to this for three times.
Ms. English, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, just thank for the work.
And Mrs., and Mrs. Q?
I was just to say, I don't think I've heard anything at all that said there's any value in maintaining this. It's no benefit to us whatsoever, so, three times is fine.
And all I would need is a motion.
I move that we approve the intent to hold a Tabor debruising election in November second, one twenty-one.
Second, motion by Ms. English, second by Mr. Seaver, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would have one follow, follow up question for you while we have you here. So this, this, all we did tonight, we didn't, we didn't vote to debruise, we just voted to put, uh, a measure on the ballot. And if it, if it weren't to pass, if the voters did not approve this, um, we really haven't absolved ourselves of anything, but at least maybe before the state, we could say, uh, as a district, we put it before the voters, um, we believe, we campaigned for it, and is, is, is that, is that true? Does that bias anything, even if it doesn't pass?
Yeah, it, it certainly, you would say that, and they tried. Um, I, I could imagine that some of the people at the State House might say, well, we need to do is give your voters an incentive. An incentive, an incentive would be we're going to reduce your state aid unless you do this. So, I think that's, that's the worst case.
Thank you. That was enough. There you go. Poor Dalton. Uh, again, I'll say, uh, members of the public who desire to address the board on any topic related to board work must sign in on the roster before six thirty P M. If you haven't signed in already, uh, give you a little bit more time to do so. Uh, moving on to item number six, matters reserved for board action. G C two, the Board of Education represents, leads, and serves the district homeowners and holds itself accountable to them by committing to the act in their best interest and by ensuring that all board and district action is consistent with law and the board's policies according to Colorado revised statutes. Uh, six point one, general obligation improvement and refunding bonds. I have, uh, today, Mr. Jason Simmons, uh, Hilltop Securities, David Bell, R B C Capital Markets, uh, Mr. Dalton Kelly, and Butler Snow. Welcome, all of you. Are you? Sir Paul?
Good evening, uh, this is Jason Simmons, thanks for having me this evening. Um, and I'll be walking through the, the presentation that we put together. Uh, again, Jason Simmons, Hilltop Securities, we serve as the district's municipal advisor. And here we have David Bell from R B C Capital Markets, who is serving as district underwriter, and Dalton Kelly, who is serving as, uh, bond and, and, and disclosure counsel, writing the offering document for Dr. Vaughn, specifically for Dr. Vaughn. Uh, thank you for the stop and ask any questions as I'm walking through this. Uh, but this evening, the board is, has a, a parameters resolution for them for consideration for the issues of the coming general obligation bonds. Uh, the resolution would allow them. I, I'm trying to hold, I'm trying to.
Team one, team one.
Too many things going on. Um, thank you, David. Uh, so the resolution will allow the district to do two things. One is to issue remaining eighty million dollars of new money authorization from the twenty eighteen election. And the other is to authorize a refunding of the district's outstanding Series two thousand and ten general obligation bond for interest savings. Uh, the resolution was prepared by Butler Snow. Both David and I and other members of the financing team weighed in on the parameters within the resolution. Um, and really, the resolution is long, you know, but, uh, you know, as, and it says many things that are very important. But one of the most important things is that it, uh, section five A two establishes parameters for which you are authorizing the district to move forward and, and issue your bonds, and as long as the bonds are issued within the parameters of that resolution. Uh, and I don't think I have those specifically there.
Yes, sir.
So, the, basically, essentially, the, the general parameters of the resolution are, um, the, the final term of the bond, we're saying that the, the new money bond will not have a maturity date longer than twenty forty-one or twenty years. Um, the, the refunding bonds will not have a par amount that exceeds the par amount that we are refunding. The new money bonds will not have a par amount greater than eighty million dollars. And here's that new money issuance, we also have to make sure that those, in conjunction with the bonds that were issued in twenty nineteen, that first hundred million dollars, stay within the parameters of the ballot forever, uh, from twenty eighteen. Uh, and then we also designate a purchase price, and we're also saying that the refunding portion of those bonds must have a present value savings of greater than three percent. So those are parameters that are in the resolution, the amendment authorization tonight, the district is able to move forward and issue those bonds as long as both the new money and refunding fall within those parameters established in the resolution. So a little bit of background, in the two thousand and eighteen election, uh, the district perceived that it would issue up to a hundred and eighty million dollars of general obligation bonds. There were a couple of key parameters in that ballot measure, the maximum annual debt service could not exceed sixteen point two million dollars, and the total repayment of the, of all the bonds could not exceed three hundred and thirty-five million dollars. In January twenty nineteen, the district issued its first hundred million dollars of bonds. Um, and all throughout the planning process, we did anticipate two separate issuances, um, and, and that's where we built in some, uh, interest rate cushion into the parameters that were in the ballot measure, to make sure that the district would issue all of that, in case there's a change in interest rates between twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen when the ballot measure was approved, and twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, when we issued the second piece of those bonds. Uh, so you can see in the table below, uh, again, the district has eighty million dollars left from the twenty eighteen election. The ballot parameters, again, a hundred and eighty million of par that could be issued, the maximum annual debt service sixteen point two million dollars, total repayment of three hundred and thirty-five million. Uh, the second part of the table over to the right, again, we will issue all hundred and eighty million dollars. Our projected maximum annual debt service is less than the current main parameters, could be about fourteen and a half million, and the total repayment will be about three hundred million, under the three hundred and thirty-five that was in the ballot.
Do you have a number for, uh, the bonds that would be refunded?
I do, that's on the, on the next slide. Uh, and one other thing I, I failed to mention on the, related to the two thousand and eighteen election, is that those, uh, that was, uh, bond issuance sides, uh, with the goal of having that tax increase, the average homeowner within the district be fifteen dollars a month. And so we are still executing the second part of the, of the bond issuance to stay within that, uh, measure, that, the, the messaging that was in conjunction with the two thousand and eighteen election. So this is, we're still staying within that fifteen dollar a month, uh, cost for this bond. So the refunding bonds, so. So the refunding bonds, so the district issued Series 2010 Geo bonds and they were originally outstanding in an amount of $35 million. They're currently outstanding in a par amount of about $13 million. They have a final maturity in 2027. Those bonds are callable this December. And when bonds are callable, you can refinance them, just like you refinance your house for interest rate savings. And obviously, we're in a very low interest rate environment right now. So it creates a great opportunity for the district to refund those bonds. So that callable amount is the, the amount that we're bound to refund. Correct, but it's not $13 million. And when you execute the save, the refunding, the savings will be about $1.5 million, or about $200,000 a year. And the general rule of thumb by the government finances, obviously, association is, refunding makes sense and they would recommend best practices to execute a refunding if it generates greater than 3% present value savings. And that's the present value cash flow savings over the par amount of the bonds you're refunding. Right now, I think you're about, about 13% FD savings, so it's a very good saving from that perspective. So I can stop there and do you have any questions on the new money or the refunding?
My only question was for the refunding because of the par amount there. And I was looking at the par amount, that's not it, can't be it. And then, just to clarify, I got you now.
You, you guys may remember, some of you do, I know, that we did a refunding in 15 or 16 maybe? That was not on this series of bonds, it was on a different series of bonds. The idea of saving for interest savings and that sort of savings we have actually done. Let's say it was maybe 16.
Pretty, it's, I, I remember then, we use that as part of our, our ballot campaign language is that we had, was already saved an amount and that was really an equal to the, to the payment of the new bond. So I thought it was very crucial to have that message for the, for the taxpayers for the campaign that we passed the bond.
So this is a similar transaction on a different series of bonds.
Any other questions? Then I'll just touch on that timetable.
I think you're free to move on to the timetable.
Okay, so the timetable, the bonds can be callable, they're callable this December. We want to close that transaction after September 1st. That makes it a current refunding, which allows the district to do this refunding on a tax exempt basis. Tax exempt rates are lower than taxable rates. And so here we are tonight on, on June 17th, discussing the parameters of the resolution. And the documents are already in process. We need to, Butler Snow will begin work on the preliminary official statement. There's a form of the 2019 preliminary official statement that was filed with the resolution this evening. The preliminary official statement for the 2021 bond will look essentially the same. Just be updated for events that have occurred since 2019 and honestly, put in a new plan for now. We will continue to work through the summer, through the end of July, when we'll have conversations with the rating agencies. We would expect ratings to be affirmed where they are at levels. And then we will post a POS in mid-August and price the bond in late August and close again right after the 1st of September, targeting a closing date of September 8th. And any other questions?
Ms. Pugh, anything to add? Mrs. English?
No, I think we were all wanting to know what the refund question, our question, the non-question, I don't know.
All I would need is a motion?
Actually, can I just say something real quick?
Of course, yes.
Is really something the district should be very proud of. All of us were here three, four years ago when we started this planning for this ballot question that's turned into this $180 million election. We got very good interest rates at the beginning of 2019 for the first time. The market is in historic lows today. So, you know what, you did the right thing for your voters to get all these improvements done at as low borrowing cost as you can. And I think you guys should be really proud of that. Shelley and her team have done an amazing job to get this done. So congratulations.
Well, I greatly appreciate that. I was going to say my comment for after the vote, until it was, until it was done, done. Our mission is for the interest of, of the kids and the community. And the hard work that you guys have put forth for us, bringing us the information that we need to make better decisions is so appreciated. You wouldn't understand, or you probably understand and, and that's probably why you do. That's why you do what you do. It's because your heart is in the kids and so is ours. But we greatly appreciate all of you for all the hard work that you've done. And Shelley for leading your, your team as you so valiantly do that my inspiring arm referred to for our, our funds. We greatly appreciate you as you already know. Thank you.
Nothing will get you in trouble with your constituents faster than money. You know, you can have an upset parent, but when the money is involved the entire district, there, nothing will create an uprising. Like, I'm term limited off in a few months and probably wouldn't have to hear much of the repercussions, but so many of my fellow Board members would have to live with, with scrutiny for, for several more years. So that having said, I'm not going to say it's a foreground conclusion or how I will vote on the matter, but I just felt it necessary to publicly say that for anyone who is, who is watching at home.
All right, if I could have a motion?
I move that the Board approve the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of general obligation refunding and improvement bonds. Series 2021, a continuing disclosure undertaking, an official statement and related documents, ratifying action previously taken concerning the referenced documents and providing for other matters relating hereto.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. English. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It doesn't pass. Eyes have it.
Thank you.
There's an awful lot of work waiting for that.
And we're going to backtrack just a bit. Move on to the public comment. I have no public comment. In case we did have a public comment. Members of the public who desire to address the Board of any topic related to Board work will contribute so at any, at that time. Personal tax are never allowed. Focus on an individual will end speaker's comment time. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. Since we have no speakers of the public to this day. We'll move on to 6.2, official notice of intent for the district to participate in coordinated election. As many of you may know, we have three seats becoming vacant in the fall of this year. And we had a, we've had two informationals for people who are interested in joining the Board. And our candidates look promising. The future is looking bright. So we are waiting to see how that election will go. And we have to send that to the county so that they know we're going to have that election. And we'll see who our new seated Board members will be in November. So if I could just get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Harrison School District 2 and the County of El Paso, State of Colorado, Board of Education shall conduct its regular biennial school election on November 2nd, 2021, as provided by state law and participate in the election coordinated by the county clerk and recorder of El Paso County. The Harrison School District 2 shall contract with the county clerk and recorder of El Paso County for the administration of the regular biennial school election and enter into an intergovernmental agreement with El Paso County for this purpose. The county clerk and recorder shall serve as a coordinated election official and the Board of Education designates Norma, I'm a reminder, sorry if I did it wrong, to serve as a school designated election official for the November 2nd, 2021 coordinated election.
Motion by Mrs. English, second by Mrs. Pugh. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. We pause just for you, Shelley. Moving on to item 6.3, the presentation and adoption of fiscal year 2021, 2022 financial plan and budget. Ms. Shelley, prepare.
Thank you. Hi, I'm the Board of Education. Excited to be here tonight to present for adoption fiscal year 2021, 2022 adopted budget and financial plan. And I apologize, I'm looking at my screen prints and I'm wondering why I have a big white box there. But that's okay, we're going to keep on moving. So tonight here, we are reviewing any changes at all from the proposed agenda that was presented to the Board of Education at the late 20th Board meeting to adopted budget information this evening. And then the action needed by the Board of Education will need to adopt three different resolutions. So this has been quite the legislative year when it comes forward to all things with the School Finance Act. So you will notice at the time of this going to print meeting to the Board back a week ago, it was still awaiting the governor's signature. That hasn't now since happened. And we're very excited and just moving that forward. We're still at the state level and even for school districts, we have yet quite still to filter through. The government has just signed into law, but it's really exciting for public education, some of the pieces and additional funding for school districts. And we're going to talk about that real quickly. The biggest, not the biggest, but one of whom we talked before, School Finance Act is funded on inflation and growth. Inflation this year at 2%. Our people count, we had talked about this last time. This does not include yet, we know we'll be adding Vanguard as a result of last month. But again, we're continuing to monitor, as with all school districts, people enrollments. The State of Colorado last year, as we remember, this past year, lost 33,000 students collectively across the state. And I would say we are all anxiously awaiting to see what this fall may look like across the state. So very excited. We had talked about it last time, but the School Finance Act, and I cannot see if this is going to be our last time to say the BS factor and giggle about it. The negative factor, also known as the budget stabilization factor. With COVID hit and all things in the economy and projections and estimates, we know the negative factor is the balance, state balancing mechanism off the backs of school districts. So the negative factor last year was increased over 1.1 billion. That's 1.1 billion. That is not being funded or given to school districts through the School Finance Act that they should be. So we're very excited. Year later, things are much different, economy is rebounding, sales tax, income taxes, exceeded expectations at the state level as projected. So really exciting that there has been a buy down of the negative factor by 480 million. So it puts us back down to where all school districts were back in 2019, 2020. So you can see there for our member in the middle with Harrison, that 14 million. That 14 million represents this past year, that's 14 million we are now receiving in one year due to the negative factor. So we're excited that it's going down from next year to all like 7.8 million. But that does still represent, that 7.8 million, we will not receive through the School Finance Act because of the negative factor. I think this really tells a little bit where we've been. So per pupil revenue, all of those cute little kiddos sitting in the desks were virtually or online, per pupil revenue. And that is important, that's the largest part of our state income that we receive at Harrison. Really excited, our per pupil revenue, I had to keep double checking. I'm like, wow, this is a 9,000 number.
Right, but it's going up and not going down.
And there's just, right, something to hear about that. You can see where we've been in the past, 8200, back at 1928, 8758. Last year, you see that we have a big drop, 8251. So again, we are talking about per pupil revenue going from 8251 to 9148. Scott's always so great at the mental math line to me, but that's not quite a thousand dollars per pupil. And that's.
Is that coming from us having lost that 33,000 students statewide? That, that per pupil revenue is going up for all the other students that did stay?
I would say it's a combination of things in the School Finance Act. It's the negative factor buy down, that's the largest component. It's a piece of the 2% inflation. And there's a couple of other components, changes to the School Finance Act around the counting of students as at risk. So pretty excited, before in Colorado, at risk is defined as free lunch and just free lunch. Part of now the School Finance Act will also include increased lunch applications. So additional funding for that as well. So that's another great source of funding for school districts this next year. I know this is a very busy visual and this comes from one of our partners. This is a nonprofit called the Colorado School Finance Project. Corey has been there to me before, yes, and hopeful to get to back or indeed again. There has been so much going on with school funding this year. They put together this visual, just is a lot. So public school finance up in the left-hand corner of that circle, Senate bill this year, 268. That's the School Finance Act, this is our per pupil revenue. Look at all the different pieces and parts that have come into play this year. There's been other legislation, you can read into that, additional grants. Do you look at some additional funding for early childhood? You have everything down federal COVID assistance. Additional, talking about, DeWeiser touched on it, mobility stabilization. And then as you go upward to what's called the long bill, there's some additional funding put in for like our categorical special education. So this is just a great visual picture of, it's a lot being complicated. But it's also an exciting time to see a lot of great things coming forward for funding for school districts. This has been quite an unheard of year and very excited for all K-12 education across the state. So here for us at Harrison, how does that translate? Very excited and I think Dr. Berhansel as well for all of us with her budget. Just really excited where we are. Salary and benefit increase to all employees, 4.4 million. We know utility increases, we're having some increases going up, but we're also going to be addressing water needs schedule. And as we talk about our curb appeal and what does that mean? So we're intentionally working on that with our utility increases. Some one-time expenditures throughout departments, these are just some. One-time little software purchasing and other items. We have gone through, we talked about this last month, a disruption of the alignment of staffing of 78 FTE. We know we're still in the declining people enrollment category, but I think we're all anxiously looking forward to what this fall may bring for all of us. Can't go on, notice with our federal stimulus funding. Again, as we talked about last month, that's 58, almost 58 million dollars that we are receiving in the federal stimulus funding through ESER and that will continue on over the next couple of years. And then the negative factor buy down. So here, this is to show, we are required to show any changes from the proposed budget to the adopted budget. And the general fund is the only one that we have any changes. So in the change column, we're using state revenue and you see that $8 million. That is a change due to the buy down of the negative factor. As we look down under expenditures, salaries and benefits. So some of the messaging. So some of the messaging, Dr. Berhansel, myself, and our party, we have talked about it over the year, over the year, just full budget planning and so many unknowns that should have been down of the negative factor or an additional recurring streams of revenue. Uh, Dr. Berhansel's very intentional about compensation, and that is the message we have talked at length, um, communicated to them. We care about our employees, and we know who we work, so, um, that additional increases in expenditures is to account for that. So for about four point four compensation to our staff.
And I don't see, uh, Dr. Claudio here this evening, but if, to attest to the, to the personnel report, you look at, at retention decreases in, in loss of staff virtually across the board. I don't think it's a coincidence. There's, there's a direct correlation between the environment, those messages, and, and that staff retention.
Yeah, and all of you remembered, especially Linda, being on the ATU, right? We had come out first with a proposal, what we thought we could afford and do full well knowing with the legislature, right, recessed and delayed. Should it come, how it's ended up, we knew we would come back forward to give whatever additional compensation to have that discussion. Um, I'm pretty excited because I'm benchmarking to the art areas, school districts. Um, all school districts are hovering right in line between us four to six percent. You know, it's really exciting to see and hear and talk about it, um, right? Because we all talk and compare, and, you know, what's your average teacher's starting salary and, and all of that. So it just is a positive, um, positive note for public education. So with that, I'm just gonna, um, go right forward to the colorful sheet, as we call it, and look out, um, five years. I am just tickled pink, um, but as again, we know this is budget, it's a model, it's a forecast, can change. And what I would point us to is, we know our board policy, fund balance policy for the general fund is thirteen percent of expenditures. So in the green section towards the bottom half that says ending fund balance. When you look at that ending fund balance of expenditures going across, you're seeing we are twenties nineteen, and our requirement is thirteen. So truly, truly very excited, um, lots of more work to go, and as we know, a lot can happen five years out. Absolutely, you've seen that happen through the legislature. Absolutely, they could come back and say, let's increase back up the negative factor, right? As we know, um, every year the legislature, but, um, a really great, um, opportunity. The district is in a very solid financial position. We recently, our, um, credit rating, we were upgraded a notch, so that's also exciting, all of the bone work and selling of bones.
Very, very crucial with the sale of funds, there's an element about it.
And.
And it's very beneficial. As I do that credit rating, I think of all the reports I've taken, I want to aim best.
Oh, nice.
And doing credit reports on everything, that's fantastic.
So does anybody have any questions so far? Okay, I'm gonna keep on. Okay, I always like to point this is here to tell us right here, for next year, we are over at two hundred and four, um, million dollar budget. Um, I just wanna highlight our grant fund, designated purpose grant fund, on average, that had been like a twelve, fourteen million. That is where we're accounting for all of the S of the federal stimulus funding. Um, moving forward, you'll be happy, more discussions and hearing about that, and we're getting it ahead of the curve and add federal stimulus financial reporting element to our monthly financial statements. A number of districts are starting, um, to incorporate that. I think that would be best practice, or Board of Education has some additional information um, as to what is being spent and how. So just know that's something we are looking at and moving forward. Um, but as I know the question, and I expect, um, more upcoming from the state, right, as they report, entities wanting to know, well, what are school districts spending? In our case, what are we spending our fifty-seven point seven billion on? So we get some additional information from Board of Education on going on a monthly basis. Um, we still have work to do with our SR three plan, our thirty-two million. Um, we have already started our audit. We had our auditors onsite last week, and we are off and running. And again, uh, same team over back in August can present to the Board of Education by the end of November. Um, and then we're back looking at revised budget again. So I would be remiss, though, if I did not thank, um, thank Dr. Berhansel, my fellow party members, this gentleman behind me, leading the charge, uh, Scott Howard, and the finance team, and those who are quietly behind the scenes. This has been just such an incredible budget building year, whether it's, I keep saying Rachel and Wendy, the work they have done in depth with the schools um, has just been phenomenal. And because all of this, and with COVID, it's changed, and it's been, we've been doing this since February, a lot of sense-making to help people, um, clarification and information. So, um, yeah, this is very much a lead team village. Uh, I just kinda helped lead the charge, but we feel it is very, um, thorough. Um, we value our staff, we're investing in our compensation and for our staff. Um, you know, and other exciting things, as we talk about, like curb appeal and our external, um, so a lot of good work. So, um, thank you, Board of Education, and to all of, um, you, um, as well. I'll go back, um, a big thing, Shelley and her team, I know you guys know the great work they do. In the year of COVID, with no, um, fiscal note coming from the state until last week, um, we didn't wait for that. We still built the budget. Um, Shelley, Scott, and Rachel, and executive team, and I met lots of times, um, with projections of what we thought we were gonna sit with, and then made adjustments. But I think this year, one thing to be proud of as a district is our budget speaks to what we value, which is students and staff. It's very clear that that's where we're putting our money, and that's who we're gonna support. The other thing is that we didn't just keep status quo because it was comfortable. We made changes if we needed to make changes, so that we could put the money where we needed to use the money. So, um, really positive budget last year this time, we did not see twenty percent sitting in, um, our fund balance going forward. So we're in a very financially stable position, like Shelley said, it can change. But even with the changes we made, and I think we've invested in, we still have big, really financially solvent, and those are quite.
And I was just thinking about, I was having that, uh, that fund balance, that over that, that twenty percent, I recall, when, um, COVID hit, and we needed to, uh, loosen up that number a little bit, we had to release some of those funds, and the fact that that's coming back, and we're tightening that money again, and, and we're getting back to where we were, that, that rebound is, is amazing. Not many corporations or entities, and the, and the district is an entity in itself, uh, can do that, and, and have such fluidity. And, and a team as strong as yours, I mean, you, you're the stuff that they write about in textbooks. But, uh, we, we, we truly do appreciate you, Shelley, your team, um, Wendy, uh, the choices that you've made financially for the district, uh, for the management of our students. You know, your heart is truly in it, uh, your decisions are sound, uh, as well as yours as well, uh, Ms. Becker. Can't thank you guys enough. Uh, I have three motions, uh, uh, just for the folks at home, uh, we have seen individual presentations on all of these motions. Um, this is just the solidification of the great work that our staff and superintendent have done for our district. And without further ado, with the first motion. I guess as, as new treasurer, I'll start. I remember the days where these were pages of resolutions, reading and reading, and everything within me, so. But that being said, I believe that the board approved the resolution titled Budget and Appropriation Resolution Regarding the Need for This Board to Approve the Budget of Revenues and Expenditures For the School District for the Fiscal Year Beginning July first, two thousand twenty-one, and Ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and the allocations and amounts that are specifically identified in the resolution.
Should that be June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two? Yeah. It's typo. Second.
Motion by Mr. Seeger, second by Mrs. Pugh, uh, with the typo for correction. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Second motion. Anybody else?
I move that the board approved the resolution titled the Use of a Portion of Beginning Fund Balance as Authorized by Colorado Statutes Regarding the Need for This Board to Authorize the Transfer and Use of a Portion of the FY twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two Beginning Fund Balance with a Purpose or Purposes Need for each respective Fund, and the amounts and purposes that are specifically identified in the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Pugh, second by Mrs. English. All of us in favor? Aye.
I move that the board approved the resolution titled fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Supplemental Budget and Appropriation Resolution Regarding the Need for the Board to Approve the Adoption of a Sub- Supplemental Budget for Expenditures Not to Exceed the Amounts listed in the resolution.
Second. Motion by Mrs. English, second by Mr. Seeger. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very much, I approve. Thank you, Shelley, for all of your hard work. And that gamble is the solidification of, we did it, celebration down on next year. You can breathe now.
I mean, definitely, stopping trying to do a budget then. Great, thank you all, I appreciate, thank you, Board of Education.
All right. I feel like the news teleprompter guy who's just reading along. Moving on to item number seven, Board Consent Agenda. G C two point six, the board will use consent agenda as means to expedite the disposition of retained matters and disclose of other items of business chooses not to discuss. Seven point one was the approval of minutes, and just to recap a few of the things that happened, uh, during those meetings, we met our Equity Council, in which, uh, next year, we will have eighty-five percent retention of those persons. Uh, we voted on the new ATU. We also voted on the addition of the Vanguard School. Uh, in seven point two, operational expectations, uh, asset protection, uh, the comments that we left for those items, uh, uh, was the exceptional use of protection of our assets, so no comments from Randy, which is very rare indeed. Uh, and seven point three, uh, operational expectation, twelve student discipline, Dr. Claudio presented to us, uh, the new format for that report, and also, uh, uh, indicated that we would have new indicators promoted to us, uh, for that particular, uh, report. Um, and we are definitely waiting to see what those indicators will be, and for seven point four, all I would need is a motion. I move to approve the Board Consent Agenda items as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Seeger, second by Mrs. English. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just real quick, I know people are here watching, and y'all don't see me moving and standing and just looking uncomfortable, it's cause I have a sprained chest wall, so that's why I'm coming. Just to say, so y'all don't think I'm distracted or not, can I just?
She's, she's a little sore.
Yeah, he's a little sore.
And the, we, uh, included in the voting, which the O E S that we reviewed at the work session.
All right, moving along to item number eight, Superintendent Consent Agenda. Uh, G C two point six, the board will use consent agenda as means to expedite the disposition of retained matters and disclose of other items of business which chooses not to discuss. Uh, item number eight point one, uh, Human Personnel and Comparison Report. Item eight point two, April Financial Report. And item eight point three, uh, I would just need a motion.
I move to approve the Superintendent Consent Agenda items as stated.
Second.
Move by Mrs. English, second by Mrs. Pugh. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item number nine, Monitoring Board Performance. G C two point two, the board is responsible for its own performance and commits itself to continuous improvement. The board will assure that its members have the knowledge, skills, and budget support to determine it determines to be necessary for effective governance. Do we have any changes to the annual work plan?
Christine, can you share the backpack bash dates for us? If you can put it on here for board members, what you say if they would like.
That sounds amazing.
Saturday, July thirty-first.
Saturday, July thirty-first, backpack.
Eight AM to one PM at Sierra. No, I'm just gonna have it to our calendar on here, and we'll, okay, thank you.
Backpack bash?
Yeah.
Yes. Saturday, July, say it again?
Thirty-one.
July thirty-first, from eight AM to one PM.
Nine AM.
Nine AM to one PM. Thank you. That is also to inform the public, no bad.
I just wanna clarify, the board forum, the meeting, that would be for the candidates, right? That's the same day that Wisdom Sharing starts.
That needs to be changed. That's why I have it highlighted. Thank you.
Are we going to do two of those forums this year? I know that in the past, we've done one at each high school. Um, other times, we've had them in, in this room, and, and also, are we gonna ask, um, maybe, uh, an independent facilitator like the Citizen Group to maybe facilitate those forums? I know that in, again, in the past, they, they, they have, and they've been, um, a, a, a very impartial independent, uh, facilitator for those, just as a and it's, and it's not sure that we'll even have an election at this point until we have candidates to, more than, we have seats to know, but but maybe planning for those in advance, we may just wanna discuss that.
I think that having that independent person, uh, I think that worked well, having an independent running that forum and presenting the questions. We just need to look at different data.
And we wanna have one or two.
And what?
We wanna have one or two. We could have one, and then we could have an available, online for people to review, and do that, and post it, for those who couldn't get there.
Yeah.
We could do, what's the best venue for that? Maybe it's all the volume center?
That is, you're, uh, the last time you did.
We, yeah, yeah.
So you don't wanna move it too much later, you start getting into mail-in ballots.
All right.
But we have the board candidate meeting on the nineteenth. We either have to be like after Wisdom Sharing, maybe.
We do it right after Wisdom Sharing.
Is that, is that board candidate meeting really on Sunday? Can't be right. Is it on the nineteenth? I just looked.
Is that September nineteenth that you're talking about?
Yeah. That's Sunday.
No, it isn't Sunday.
Was it supposed to have been the ninth, maybe, or Thursday?
That, that wouldn't be a board day, uh, a board meeting day, unless you want us to have that event, um, the week after our, uh, work session.
On Thursdays or the night, we tend to have available, I mean, I'd be fine with doing it on the ninth.
So proposal of the night for the board, or, I mean, I'm sorry, the, uh, board candidate meeting.
Uh, my, just.
The night of September. Uh, Thursday. I would be fine with that. So September ninth, board candidate meeting.
You wanna keep the Thursday theme and use the thirtieth for the forum?
Right after the Wisdom Sharing.
On a Saturday. How was?
It's on a Saturday. How was it previously? That's my only experience.
We had done two evenings. I believe they were weekday evenings. Both that, we'd use the auditorium at Harrison. We'd use the auditorium at Sierra.
And how, how well was it?
Actually, it was, they were relatively well attended. Probably as well attended as the one that we posted here.
So real quick, though, for the board candidate meeting, we decided on a date. What time?
The, uh, the ninth.
The ninth, what time?
Six sounds fine. That's our normal gathering time.
It was a typo back in the book. It was the ninth.
Oh, good. So we, all right, there you go. At six PM?
Six PM. And then for the board forum the following week, on the thirtieth? Second time, six PM.
One of the candidates certified us from the... The packets reviewed were August twenty-seventh.
Right. We have all the, you have to have the end, August twenty-first?
August fourth, and then August first, right?
That's the third of September.
That was turned in on the twenty-seventh of August. When did they?
Correct. And everything has to be turned in, and that's one with a deadline. You will know on the third whether or not.
The third of September?
Yes.
Coming to the candidates that we have. And I suppose that in, for the face of the public, if we have three candidates, well, we're not gonna have an election if we have three candidates. So there's really no, no point for that. But probably the sooner the better for the public. We want a public forum for...
We wanted to do.
Maybe Tuesday or something.
Are we moving the board forum from the twenty-third for the wisdom sharing, right? So we're just looking for another date for that.
We have the candidates that are official.
It probably should be after the candidate meeting.
So probably, well, that, that's seven. We already have a work session.
So why wasn't the thirty not a good date on September?
Because we wanted to do it when we know exactly what candidates will be official. Once they sift them out.
They usually do it after the board candidate meeting, though. When we talk to them a little bit more about what it is to be on board.
So then going back two weeks to sixteenth?
Pardon?
If you wanna do it right, September. We wanted to do it right after the board candidate meeting, the following Thursday.
The board meeting of the sixteenth. Is that what you're referencing?
Probably not a good.
That's a packed month. That's really a packed month, yeah.
You know, unless, unless we were to do it, typically we do it sort of after five o'clock so that there's more after-work opportunities.
Right.
Though we could do, we could, if we did it the sixteenth, we could do it at three o'clock in the afternoon. I don't know how that would... And if we're gonna have a facilitator, we should probably reach out to the... To one like the citizen group and see what their availability is too. So let's do that. Let's, let's get with the citizen group to see what their availability is in the months.
Try them a lot. I'm just asking for this.
If we give them a couple of options, that they would, that they would be able to...
We don't have to stick to a Thursday. We want it sooner than the thirtieth. I mean, we didn't do a Tuesday. I guess I tend to think Mondays are the first day of the week and everybody's life is crazy because it just came off the weekend, depending on the work schedule. But I mean, it could always be a Tuesday or a Wednesday.
Are we doing one or two?
One or two. If we're gonna do it here, there's probably really only needs to be one. And we've done, and we've done just one in the past year. So it wouldn't be out of form to, I would be fine with the one and then propose all the Tuesdays for them.
The evenings.
In the evenings.
Just so we get it on the Saturday. They usually do it on Saturdays? One time that I've been working. Is there any person who could move board candidate meeting to August? If your board's down on the ninth?
Remind me what we covered, board candidate meeting. That might be helpful. Trying to recall what we did at that point. I just, I don't remember.
We've done, and we've talked about coherent governance. We've given candidates books, the asking group books. We've had, oh, they do a... Had a little bit more intimate discussion. We've done it where it's, we've had a meal and we've had a discussion about how the board operates, specific governance policies, and... Just a little more, a little more.
If we're explaining more about how we function, not thinking that maybe value of doing that before they get out in front of everybody and say they're gonna do things that potentially by our governance, they can't do. If they're not clear on how we, you know, how we function.
So use it as a time to fully discuss what it means to have a governance model. See who read the book or not. That's, yeah, I got an quiz in front of all the, all the, all the public.
I mean, because if you have a forum, they start promising stuff they can't do. I mean, that we're gonna say, well, I'm sorry, that's not how we function. I kind of think it should come after the board candidate meeting. And we can move the board candidate meeting. I mean, whichever, but...
Will you propose to move them all up, Dr. Hansel?
Yeah, because ballots drop October eleventh, November second. And I think the closer you get to when ballots drop and have the forum, you don't give people time to really look into candidates that you might be interested in. And so I think earlier, you can have the forum. Maybe you could have the forum on the ninth and push the candidate meeting into August. The other thing is if you're gonna add another meeting to September, that's gonna get really difficult.
Yeah. Do we wanna give, do we wanna give them maybe three dates? Maybe like nine, ten, no, September eleventh is probably not a good... I was gonna say nine, ten, or eleven, but that's, that's September eleventh. Although I don't know, observations.
Are we trying for the weekend then, as opposed to a Tuesday?
It could, it could be a weekday evening or, or a, you know, an earlier Saturday afternoon. But I was just gonna try to give them some options.
How about Tuesdays and Wednesdays, starting the fourteenth? Those, those two weeks in there is, is the twenty-second?
The seventh and the fourteenth?
Pardon?
The seventh and the fourteenth?
No, the fourteenth, fifteenth, the twenty-first, and twenty-second. Because we're talking about the availability of somebody to facilitate. Is that getting too close still?
Let's do the fourteenth and the fifteenth because we'll be getting ready for twenty-second. We'll probably leave at the twenty-second.
Do we need to give them a Saturday, though, Norma? Because you said they usually, or what your experience is, they've done something on Saturday. But that's fine.
But they will do, they'll work with that. I'll give them one here.
So maybe like ten and eleven and fourteen, fifteen? Ten, eleven, and then fourteen. I can do that, yeah. Ten, uh, ten, eleven, September eleven, fourteen, and the fifteenth.
Three Saturday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yes. And Saturday, if they, if Saturday works, we could do it. Not an after-work, not a five o'clock or six o'clock type. We could do maybe a three o'clock.
On Saturday?
On Saturday.
And then in the evenings, it'll be at six or?
Yeah, six o'clock.
Oh. Do you have a time to get off work?
Are we good?
All right, so we have those changes. Any legislative updates other than Governor Polis?
Well, the fiscal note, that's success. And then I know you all are interested in the student medical marijuana distribution. We still have the legalities and the lawyer input into that. So again, as soon as we get that, we'll bring it to you, but no future information yet.
Thank you for that. All right, moving on to item number ten, and I just need a motion.
I move to adjourn the Board of Education board meeting.
Second. Motion by Mrs. English, second by Mr. Seeger. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You is adjourned.